Hey, this is a spoiler alert for Cable Land. I have a possible conflict with the applicant, so I'm not going to partake in the proceedings tonight. I'll just run the hearing, but I won't throw any comments in or anything like that, alright? So, without further ado, we will open this public hearing for...
April 26th?
Oh, first day.
Yes. For Bonnie Pike Independent Dental Hygienist for the Acton Family Dental at 2 Yosrich Road, MAP 138, lot 25. And the way we're gonna do this is, the applicant or the applicant's agent will explain what it is they want to do. Then we'll take any questions from the audience, and any questions from the board, and when the audience is out of questions, we'll close the public hearing and go on with our meeting. So, would the applicant or the applicant's agent like to tell us what they're gonna be doing? What they propose?
Yes, sure. I'm the applicant, and I'm hoping to open a preventative dental hygiene practice, basically serving the community, the area. This York County is considered limited access to dental care through main care recipients. And this would be, hopefully, fulfilling some of that limited access right now, and create the possibility of, obviously, access to care. So... And that sums it up. It's not a dental practice, it's a dental hygiene practice, so we wouldn't be having any type of hazardous waste per se, or things of that nature. So, does anybody have any questions?
Right. Does anyone in the audience have any questions? And if so, please address them to the chair, which is I. And no questions from the public? Any comments from the public? Now, we're gonna close this public hearing. And anybody in the board have any comments or questions?
We had our discussion already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Introduce the project.
Has anything else come up? Anything you want or two? We about get a little site plan to show.
That was circulated at the planning meeting last time I was here. Threw up all the members at the table.
For the parking area as well as the inside of the building?
Just the inside. The parking area would be what it was as a convenience. I can only see one patient at a time, so...
You don't plan to change in the parking area in any way?
No. No.
I can predict that when we had it finished, we held up $15, $20 there. And a few trucks went along the park.
There's a map of the inside.
Kenny, do you have any sense of should we be, uh, access in from one and out? You know, there's an access and an egress there. How should we handle that?
I think with the amount of design, with the flow that's gonna be there, I don't see it as an issue. Limit it to the one chair for now, and if they need to expand in the future to two or three other chairs in there, then they can come back and readjust it. For one chair, I don't see it as an issue for the septic, for the parking or anything.
Do you wanna do it that way, or do you wanna do it for your proposed maximum?
Well, what would the difference be? What would your requirements be if I went, you know?
I don't know, but you'd have to talk to Kenny, but it would certainly...
Would it change?
I think this, we'd look at the septic if we get into two or three chairs. If they got in there and she starts using it, she can put a water meter on it, and we can see how little water there is being used, and that'll offset the septic, 'cause now they're looking at... If the three chairs were there, that would exceed the septic system. But if she gets in there, she can use, she can hook a water meter up and we can calculate it, and I think the water flow's gonna be a lot lower than the standard the state uses.
I thought it was up to four employees. For that.
The dentist has a different... The septic is designed for four employees?
Yeah.
For convenience. But a dentist, it's just a dentist, it doesn't say hygienist, is going to be one gallon per seat. So, but I think once you got in, you could do a water meter in there, and then we could calculate exactly how many gallons a day you'd be using, and I think you'd be well below the flow that was calculated with the original design.
Okay.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
How about signage? What kind of signs are you gonna put up?
Um, I thought I'd just replace what's there now with my own Acton Family Dental sector, and my under independent dental hygiene practice, and that's it.
No beer?
Pardon me?
No beer?
No, no, okay.
Last chance, then.
Maybe later.
Nice beer, but you have to put it in that corner.
It didn't change the voice.
It didn't, did it?
Something to look for the teeth? Anyone else? Maybe we should just look quickly at, uh, at district and see if there's anything that falls out. What did we, uh, what did we decide this was? When you were looking at the language structure, so we can call it, uh, other? Other use? Similar condition? And you remember what we called this?
Yeah.
Accessory? Similar condition? Don't they address medical something?
It was under professional.
Business services?
Yeah.
Yeah. Site plan to do at that point. You mean under medical treatment?
No. I believe, uh, Ken is correct. It's, um, under professional.
Okay. Well, we do have a listing for professional and business services having less than 2,500 square feet of gross floor area, and if it falls within that, it would be a conditional use. Commercial C down here. What's that? Kenny, what zone is?
Six.
Six. Commercial B. What is the square footage of that?
15, huh? Two-thirds of the lot is rural, one-third is commercial C. It's a conditional use either way, so the use really isn't there for the chat on his own.
What's up with that thing, y'all? Sounds like a professional.
Yep.
Alright. How's that work when there's two zones?
I usually look at where the building is, where the use is, depending on how it's split. In this case here, the, it's both permitted use with a conditional use, so there's no difference in that. It'd be more complicated if one was a prohibited use.
I think generally you go with the...
More restrictive.
Right. Anyone else say anything? Well, what do you guys wanna do next? Well, wait a minute, just put it out there. Page 34, just so you know.
The septic acts?
Uh, I'm looking at 4.6. I mean, this was a big existing lot, but if that's a, it wasn't a non-conform demerit.
How many acres is the lot? Two plus. Two plus? Yeah. Yeah, so it's a non-conform demerit, I can legally exist there. But it meets all the septic acts and lot coverage and everything.
What do you guys wanna do? We go home, handle this at a regular meeting, or whatever you like. Just one other quick one there. We did something a while back that allowed this building to have a second story recently. Did we just sell the...
This one here? This side here?
Well, it wasn't aimed at this building, but this building fell within it, if you recall. There was, there was a two or more principal uses or something?
Um, I think there were prior buyers that were thinking maybe of trying to live there and do a dwelling and a business, but this is a separate lot from the dwelling that's there now.
Right, from the inside.
Correct.
Right. But I thought we amended the zoning to allow a, uh, an apartment above that, no?
No, we didn't. We tried to get that passed at the town meeting, it was defeated.
Oh, I'm one of getting confused is we...
Didn't wanna change this.
No, no, I...
Oh, she's right.
The, there was a decision to change it, but town meeting defeated, that's what I'm getting...
Right, right. We have proposed to.
Thank you. I don't see any, uh, going through the approval process, but it would help, I just like to move forward with the activity. I would move we go through the standard, that was, that's not a real problem with this meeting. I don't, I don't think it is. I mean, it's, you guys can do whatever you want.
That's a motion.
Any further discussion on that? On going ahead with the process, which we need, go through the findings of fact, so on and so forth? No further discussion, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, aye? Alright, so that's a done deal. So, who would like to read the findings of fact on page... Five.
I'll read it, but if you, uh, every time I raise my hand, you'll say, "Wait to read it."
Okay.
Would you be so kind?
One of the letters that goes up to, I'm missing my words.
Yeah. Here. Just use this. Yeah, I think that's what you use. You may as well read it for the, for the record, for Ken.
I'll read it fast, just to be clear.
Yep.
These are standards applicable to conditional uses, and the board shall approve the application unless it makes written findings that one or more of these criteria have not been met. A, the useful lot have adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, water around that, wildlife habitat. Okay, I would just, are we gonna vote on these as we go?
Mr. Jim? Uh, I don't know that you have to, I think that you can probably vote when you're all done. Or you can vote it every one, whatever you guys wanna do, if you think it makes sense, 'cause if we're, if we're opposed to one or more, then we're fetching up, so that'd make more sense to prove one at a time. Sounds good to me. So, all those that now, so, for A, what is it you guys are voting on? Is that applicable, or that it won't cause any adverse impact?
There ought to be a quick motion made, and I'll, I'll make a motion that that it won't, the activity will not have adverse impact.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, aye? Okay, that's good.
So, that's a yes?
No, that's a...
When we posed the question?
Well, it will not have adverse impact.
Yes, it will not have.
Right.
B, the use will conserve shore cover initial as well as... Okay. Here we have it, sir.
Yeah?
Not applicable.
Okay.
C, the use is consistent with the compass plan. I move that it is consistent with the compass plan.
You alright? Okay.
Need a second.
The use is consistent, so you're saying yes, it is consistent?
Yes. All's in favor? D, traffic access to the site sustains contained disorder and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with form standards and disorders.
Yes. All's in favor? Alright.
E, uh, not applicable. Site designs that conform with municipal flat house and protection regulations. It's not any mini air floods on this.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Adequate provision for the disposal of all waste water and solid waste has been made. Agreed.
All's in favor?
Will you have a dumpster on the site? Is that how you're gonna take care of this all the way?
No, 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 I won't be accumulating enough trash to have a dumpster on site.
So, you've taken it to the local?
I'll be removing it, yeah.
Local landfill?
Yep.
You guys happy with that? You want, maybe you wanna tell them what kinda waste you might have?
It's mostly paper products. Whatever is in storage is just thrown out, so...
What normally happens to that waste in a dental office?
That's exactly, it goes into the local landfill.
Normal waste stream.
Pardon me?
The normal waste stream.
Yes, in most dental offices. If it was a specialty practice where there was surgery going on, it would be a different situation, but any general dentist even would not have that kind of hazardous, unless it was sharps, and then there's a particular pickup company that picks those sharp products up.
So...
No.
And there's no x-ray issues here?
Uh, no, and if there, there will be at some point. There's no solutions, there's no lead, because it'll all be digital.
Okay. We could maybe make that a condition of when, even when you do the x-rays, that you just touch base with Ken on that or something?
I plan to actually do that this evening.
G, so did we vote on F? I can't remember.
Uh, you did, and then there was, Kenny had a question. So, does anyone else have any issues with that? You're fine with the waste management aspect of this?
G, adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal when he has his materials has been made? Not applicable at this stage. I would move.
All's in favor?
Aye.
H, uh, applicable? Stormwater drainage system?
That, not in this, in general, that's already been addressed, because there aren't gonna be any changes to the property other than the interior. So, we're gonna be grand following more... You have a, there's an existing building that had been in place, right? I would think, but I don't know. So, you all agree with that?
Yep.
Alright.
A, adequate provisions for, to control soil erosion, sanitation have been made, not applicable.
All agree?
Yep.
J, adequate water supply? We have an emergency system.
Please register that the innocents just made faces.
What does that mean?
They both made faces.
The water, the water that's used, and I work in an independent practice in another town, current one day a week. Even when I was practicing in a private practice with a dentist, the average water that was used in a unit, person, it's literally one quart. So...
There must be, that well must, on that property must have a huge capacity, doesn't it?
It's got a big tank, some more capacity.
It's a well meant to itself.
Oh, yes, yeah, in the bathtub, yeah.
And it's an...
It's got plenty of water in it.
Yeah.
It's a deep well, not a shower.
Two liters.
So, plenty of water. Tilted lake.
So, that would be a yes, I would move, or is that what was planned? As it is by the, by the existing owner?
You all agree?
Yes.
Okay. Provisions for buffer strips and onset landscape will provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental creatures or developments such as noise, clay, fumes, dust, odor, and light. It's not gonna be the other way around. You oughta get Mr., your neighbor to plant some shrubs on your island, right? That's just an idea. I would say that's not a...
You're all agreed?
Yep.
L, all performance standards and disorders that's applicable to the proposed use will be met. Agree?
Alright.
M, archaeological and historic resources is not applicable.
All agree? Alright. So, you got through those, it's met those findings of fact, how would you like to do the conditions or, or finding, Kenny, is that, uh, upon, how do you wanna phrase that, Ken? The waters in the...
Expansion, expansion of use. They can vacate and we'll go back over.
And what is it, was it one chair initially?
Yeah.
And you're asking for a water meter for the one chair, just to see what's going on?
No, it'd be after, when they want to expand.
Yeah.
Because like you were just saying, I think our water flow is gonna be so low, it's, it would work out with that existing septic to go to the three chairs, but...
Right. Yeah. I was gonna say, I wouldn't limit it to chairs, because she might have two chairs and just be her, working on one person, and then having another customer come in and use the other chair, but it would still be her. I would go more by employees, like if she gets up to three employees. She could have two or three chairs and just be her, still working on one person in each chair. You know, it wouldn't affect the ratio of the water, so it's still her in more than one chair, that's all I'm saying. Maybe you go by employees instead, and then look into the water ratio of them, do that one of them personally, teach them. That makes sense?
I agree.
I agree with that.
Kenny, is that based on? Keep talking.
Well, for me, that, that would make more sense, if on a lot of the four employees, that would be the maximum I would have there, with three chairs running anyway. So, if there were three hygienists, there'd be one receptionist. There's your four employees, that would be the maximum of people that's there, so...
Were there permanent staff, so permanent employees?
So, that would be the case.
So, at the time at which one more employee is engaged, that would trigger, Kenny, as...
We're looking at the septic design and the expansion of the use.
Was there another one, Ken?
Seems like there was one on the, so it's two patients. Concerned about when she starts x-rays? About what? When she's gonna do x-rays, she's gonna let us know?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's all I...
Anyone else have any issues that they wouldn't wanna see addressed?
Can I, can I just mention something? In regards to the x-rays, I have, that's the one inspection that I do have to have by the state of name. The radiology department comes in, and there are certain protocols that have to be met, so I could not use or expose x-rays unless those were met, those protocols and standards were met. So, that's a, just so you know, I'm sure that you would be notified once approval was given through the state.
Is that what the board's looking for? Just notification from the state when she has approval to perform x-rays? Is that what you guys are looking for?
Yeah, just if, that Kenny's made there, if there are any waste issues there that need to be, that we need to be concerned with.
There are no waste issues.
No x-rays going off in the space?
Nope. There's no lead, there is, there is, it's all digital, there's no solutions to develop or process or rinse.
Are these real x-rays or some kinda focus?
It's focused, focused, and it's like the mirror I'm gonna have out the back room.
Did you get some kind of sense for what that condition is?
Yes.
Alright. We'll go through these before you guys come to a final...
Well, the condition is that the board or Ken needs to know when she approves, right?
To perform x-rays?
Yeah. Absolutely.
I think that's what Tom was shooting for.
Yeah.
And that's, and then the... Does Ken have with that?
Yeah. When the second employee is, uh...
We got the water on.
Yeah. When the second employee comes onboard, then Kenny's know.
Anything else? Anybody? Does she have hours of operation, or...
I did, I shared those with you folks last, at the last meeting. It would be part-time during the day, maybe one night or two, but not after eight o'clock. Who wants to go to the dentist at eight o'clock?
Unless you had data.
Me. Wait a minute, exception for him. I mean, who's second to have that time?
I just wonder about the, Bob, you, and Deb, you know more about the trap, hopefully, but egressing, I'd like to see egressing under, excluded under 109. Does that make any sense at all?
All I can say is we had that open for 13 years and we never had a problem, no accidents whatsoever at that location, none. I mean, you have a clear view in both directions when you exit 109 and Youngsridge is the same way. You've got a wide opening area, the sewer has never had a problem like that. Otherwise, I would have closed it off, but it was an issue, and never was.
My poor vision going on onto Youngsridge. People pulling up that way and not being able to see as well around from somebody coming behind at 109 and making a turn.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm visualizing, but they...
You can see them.
That's a wide corner, it's huge, you see.
Of course, you get some people done anyways.
But, and then the other issue that compounds things a little bit, since you folks have operated the stores, is your new name across the street.
Well, that hasn't affected us at all.
In regards to traffic?
Just traffic.
I think you, it might help you to have an awareness that typically patients are seen on the hour. That would mean maximum eight people, eight cars a day. Eight would be going to that office. Unlike a convenience store where you could get eight people in 15 minutes.
Have you thought of a side business? Baby, a baby store?
I just want to, and often, often families come together, that's the other thing. So, you're seeing a mother and three kids. So I think your concern about traffic?
It's not so much traffic, it's just, it was, point the ball, base of line of sight. And I, I guess it's not an issue. I, I would kind of prefer that the egress was just on 109, not Youngsridge Road, just because it seems to cut down on the possibility of something or others going to happen. If you were pulling out onto Youngsridge Road and turning left to go either way on 109, there's, there's more chances of things occurring. But it's, it's not an issue, maybe it's just in my mind.
Tom, most of the traffic when we had the store, if they were going out, going towards the everyday, we used the entrance at 109. If they were going into the usual, they would go out to Youngsridge, they would look, and then they would just cross over to the stop sign, look both ways and then turn or go up Youngsridge.
I mean, we should get 50 or 60 calls a day easy. And we would not have, she's on time about eight of 10.
And the camp, the residents of, some are people that, where the Valley Road comes into a problem, like they come in off of 109. They don't come to, off of Youngsridge and cut through the problem.
Now I'm going to be nervous. I just want you to know what you've done, okay? I think we should unlock on wood.
Does anyone else have any concerns or conditions?
Uh, Kenny? I just wanted to firm up those hours of operation. Any weekends?
Saturday mornings possibly.
Eight to...
Noon.
Noon? Saturday?
Yeah.
Monday through Friday, eight to...
No, no, it'd be just a couple of days during the week for now. And probably noon to eight. Monday and Tuesday.
Noon to eight?
Or Tuesday and Wednesday. I have, you know, I need to get a sense of what people's needs are.
Yeah.
And I want to accommodate them as much as possible.
Yeah. I mean, just so you don't have to come back, I don't know if the board cares if it's eight to, eight to eight to...
No, 12 to eight.
12 to eight? Monday through Friday and eight to noon on Saturday?
Does the board want to narrow down hours of operation, or do you want to leave that a little bit more flexible?
Flexible, because that way you don't have to come back to us if you...
That would be great.
So what do you want?
Noon to eight, Monday through Friday and eight to noon on Saturday?
Well, eight to eight, if I could have that flexibility.
Eight to eight?
Yes.
For a standard, I don't know.
I'm sorry. Something firm, I thought you were looking for something firm. Since we're flexible, like before eight to...
This way it gives you the whole...
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, Vanessa being just one or two that show you. These are, they just like to have parameters set for us, you know, as much control as we can, because we are in arm of the government. Anything else, anybody?
Just a general question, Marty, on the, on the business. Anyone could come to this clinic, right?
Absolutely.
You don't necessarily have to be on main care.
No, no, no.
Would you, I'll, I'll call you. You don't want to divulge your hourly, your rates of care, or is it...
Actually, I can, I can tell you that they...
You don't have to.
Okay. Well, typically, a dental, independent dental hygiene practice can reduce the cost to the patients because the overhead is so much less. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like to read through the conditions so that then the board can decide if they want to vote on this? Useful to have an adverse effect, effect impact of spawning grounds, fisher plant...
That's not, it's just a condition?
Yeah, no, we're just talking about condition, all of them, the ones that we're just talking about.
Okay. As soon as she adds one new employee, she'll get back to Ken and they'll start metering to figure out what they need to do about septic. And she'll also, of course, either she or the state will get in touch with us when she gets her approval from the state for her x-ray machine. So we will be notified when set approval comes in. And the hours are eight to eight Monday through Friday and eight to 12 on Saturdays. And we didn't decide to say anything about the egress rate. Okay, so that's it.
Alright. Now, what would you guys like to do?
I will be, vote on the meeting of conditions. As a package.
Grant a conditional use permit with these conditions?
Yeah.
Second, any further discussion?
Who said you did?
Alright then, all's in favor, I?
I.
All's in favor, J? So Doug, congratulations. You're in business now.
Yay, thank you.
Now, I don't know if you guys want to... The meeting was advertised as a public hearing for, with this, conditional use permit. So I don't know that we necessarily need to do anything else right now. Unless there's something that has to get done. I don't see anything that has to be done.
Next week we have a public hearing and...
Yes.
Public hearing goes too long, but it shouldn't be...
And it'll be upstairs too, just because they're, because they're watching, crying babies. Ow! I'm just kidding. We're expecting a big old crowd. So we'll have the public hearing and then we'll have a regular meeting. And you guys scheduled a site walk? For...
May 7. Be here at 6.
May 7. They're going to meet here at 6?
Yeah.
And then go to the site?
Yeah.
And where's it at?
You might have mapped it, but I don't have a...
On Boss Road, man. New and Moon's campus, off of Red Gate.
No, you mean the one that's lake side drive?
Yeah, you take lake side drive and...
Go all the way around?
No.
Past Crawford's Camp.
You go past all the, yeah, you're out in the wider part of the lake.
And it's almost way down by where Crawford's Camp was. Across, across that inlet, I think, it would be on the east side of the peninsula. There's a little, there's a sign there, says Boss Road, you go up.
Alright, and that's for a best possible location?
Yeah, we, we kind of chose to, well, we only raised the issue of a site walk just because we were thinking of how we're going to work with Kenny on these new, uh, this period over the course of the summer, spread example where, where to figure out how to implement these new BMEs, maybe. And the thought was this looked like a kind of a problem, a problem site, or a, or a site that had some issues because of the slope. So we, the pictures didn't show much.
You know, it's hard to get a good idea for the terrain around the camp.
Oh, we have a question, people, and that, just a general question. You know, you know, in our language in the book, on reconstruction and replacement, generally, when you're talking to Kenny about this in, in the book, it says the board can, um...
Is this new terminology or is this stuff that's always on this as well?
Alright. State's now.
It's on page five and six.
The board can, is, is dealing with the best possible location in theory. And we were wondering about a, a imaginary scenario where you would want to move the camp back from the lake. But you would be fetching up on what is maybe a road setback. Is that something that would go to the Board of Appeals or something?
Well, yeah, and I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can make something more non-conforming. If we move it back from the water, while we're also putting it within a setback for a road, I don't know if that's something we could necessarily do.
What if, well, that would be the case. That would be the situation we may be faced with, Ken.
Well, what we'll have to do is we'll have to find out from like MMA maybe or something. Or Kenny just... What did he say?
Well, he wrote that out immediately, he just said that would be a, you'd have to be seeking, the applicant would have to be seeking a variance. And, and they would have, yeah. And, and the sensor is just looking at the, the little picture and you're talking. It seemed that you would have some cases hypothetically where the, increasing the water setback would be a priority as opposed to infringing upon the road.
Right, but I still don't know that we can make something, yeah, I don't know that we can necessarily do that. And I don't think we have in the past, we've tried to work within, you know, setbacks as much as we can. But, when we take a look at the site...
It's right to the terrain of the site.
May have a better sense, you know.
The best location was in, was within another setback.
You were on...
Sites we discussed, I have them on.
No. And it, that always, it depends on... Yeah, because see, we'd be causing the problem, and I don't know if, I know you can't get a variance if you're causing the problem for yourself. And if we cause the problem, I think that would preclude them from getting a variance, so...
Has the planning board ever met with the, the planning board of appeals to talk about this or anything?
No.
Yeah, they don't even accept the rule.
Well...
Well, so they have an understanding of this sort of...
Well, they, they have a board and they have their procedures. And, you know, there's certain things that, certain variances that they grant, there's some that they can't. I used to know what they were, they're in here.
Right, but if it was under recommendation of the planning board, or the, every sort of thing from just your comment?
Only, um, no, the way they work is if someone gets denied a permit from Ken, then they go to the selectmen or the Board of, the zoning Board of Appeals.
Right.
We don't really have, I don't know that... Uh, yeah, we don't really grant the type of permits that somebody would want to seek a variance on. So, it's more Ken and the selectmen. And people go to the Board of Appeals, what?
We, we would have goofed up at times again. On that particular application. Immediately the applicant had to go and seek a variance, well, I don't know necessarily, so...
Yeah, but, yeah, I know that you can't cause your own problem and then get a variance for it. So, we can't cause his problem that he would have to seek a variance if we were to have him located within a setback of a road. But there again, as long as you schedule a, a site walk, maybe you're better feel for what things are going on. And maybe, maybe the best spot is right where it's at. What does any wants to do to this place?
Where are we?
The best possible location, site walk.
Uh, if we can replace it, build it behind the existing one.
Same size or...
Plus 30%.
Is he going to have it mapped out where he's got?
Right behind the existing one.
How about for the...
Who's the 20 feet?
Septic, is there, is there any signage that we'd be able to see where the septic was going to go?
There's only one obvious place up on the top, there should be small flags.
How about where the, you just eyeball a straight line down the camp and that's where his, uh, uh, run for the pipes for the pumping would go?
Pathways resistance, yeah.
So we'd be able to eyeball that as well, in your opinion? How far is it approximately?
From the septic to the house?
For the, yeah, from the septic to the...
Little trees, it could be a... 100 feet a digger.
100 feet, it's a fair distance, too.
If they, you know, zig and zag, depending what trees they're trying to save, somewhere between 15 and 100.
When, when, if you're not able to make that trip with us, if we're looking at that and the options are moving back 10 feet, well, essentially I'll leave it where it is.
Well, it's moving back no matter what. This is where we were at, he's already moving it back 20 something feet by building it behind it.
Right, but what if we thought it was less detrimental than to the, you know, forested area of the lot if it was left where it was, couldn't it?
You guys, that's your...
That would be okay, right?
I mean, did, did, did you look at that when you were out there, that issue?
To leave, I would, I would move it back just to...
And the ones that disturb us, we talked about, I mean, we're talking about a lot of disturbance, a new septic, a new foundation.
He still needs a new septic though, correct?
Yes.
So if he leaves it in that spot or moves it back 20 feet, he's starting to be laying pipe going uphill.
Right, that's the biggest part of the disturbance.
Yeah, but that pipe, I mean, that does take weeks of a trench.
Uh, the last couple I've seen, they've all had to duck by hand in those situations.
So what's the notice, you're right, it's not a big deal.
So it's not like a excavator width path you're going to need?
Usually, I hadn't, I couldn't answer how the contractor plans on doing this, but the last couple I've seen have all been hand dug, and then they'll leave a check valve open in the pump tank, so it'll always flush back through and not freeze.
Should I get a question back again? Oh, could he, or could someone take the trees for us that have to be moved? Given the concept that's on paper now?
The contractor is out of town until beginning of next week, so...
Who's going to be there when, for the site walks, you know?
You guys.
Anybody from the owner or...
I don't believe so, it's a week from Monday.
Could he, could he help us with that by May 7?
Is the new site state or anything?
No, it's just right behind the existing one. Same sized structure right behind it, the lot's pretty obvious as far as what can be done there.
Couldn't any, is Linda okay? She's sick?
She's very sick, yeah.
Seriously?
Yeah.
There's, are there issues again?
Uh, they're just going to Florida.
Oh, oh.
It's an international term, magnitude.
She's dizzy.
Dizzy, exactly.
Could she, could she help us with a, something, a plot, plan or whatever you had down filing?
Yeah.
Just in the, in the folder, so we can...
We can make a copy of it, throw it to you.
Okay, just so we can know. And, and the layout of this was, you kind of, if I recall, you kind of made a, a loop and turned back on, on itself and headed downhill toward Bill and Jean's camp, and it's on the handpan, so to speak?
Yeah, on the right hand side, over the cliff.
On the Crawford side of the inlet?
No.
The other side?
Yeah.
So that is the peninsula, so it's got water on both sides?
Yes. Yes.
It's between two peninsulas.
Yeah, exactly, three, four peninsulas, okay.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to find it easier?
Yeah.
Does it match the camp with the picture?
Yeah, it's a small, yeah, there's the houses up there, this is just a twelve by sixteen, eighteen game.
Maybe, maybe Lyndon, you could just help us with a map so we don't fall in the arms. Alright, thank you.
Alright, you guys all set then? We're still having...
Can you make the time check?
Yes, we're still having a meeting, we'll have a meeting before the, anyway, I think. Yeah?
Will, will the contractor be back in town just so we can take those trees for us by May seventh?
I think so. He's out of town for two weeks, it's already been one, so...
Maybe we'll have a better sense of it next Thursday.
You talking to contractor, you talking to owner?
Contractor's out of town.
The owner isn't gonna be there, you said, right?
No, I haven't mentioned that.
Is he out of state?
No.
It would, it would be to his advantage to be there, right?
Definitely not.
Definitely not.
The, the shoreline regulations are so complicated and complex, first time homeowners, uh, we just found what they can and can't do in that situation to train a homeowner on the thirty percent, the best possible location, and the twenty percent lot coverage, and the trees and the vegetations, and it's consuming in long term versus a contractor that does it all the time.
Alright, does this lady need our help? Yeah, she wanted to go home an hour and a half. Anything else? Alright, then that's it, see you, careful, Lynn.